We're ready to go in the back. He told me to give him a thumbs up. And, okay, we're streaming live to the community, to all who are eagerly watching. Well, happy, I will call this meeting to order. This is the Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025, City Council Work Session. Happy December, everybody. Great turnout at the tree lighting in Willamette. And we've got our tree lighting near City Hall coming up on Friday. Looking forward to that. Time flies when you're having fun. So here we are already in December of 2025. First item of business is to approve the agenda as always. And so I would entertain a motion to do that.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the Tuesday, December 2nd agenda for our work session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for the December 2nd City Council Work Session. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none? Okay, go ahead. Call the roll for the only time today.
Council Bonnington?
Yes.
Council Bright?
Yes.
Council President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Council Groner?
Yes.
Mayor Bealistowski?
Yes. Thank you. So the agenda is approved, and that takes us to the public comments. Items not on the agenda. Any comments today?
There are no comments.
Okay. No public comments. So then moving right along, then head of schedule to Mayor and Council Reports. And I'm happy to open the floor up to the City Council for any reports you have since our last meeting in November, with the Thanksgiving holiday intertwined in there. So. Anybody want to, Council Groner?
No.
Council President Baumgartner, go ahead.
Yes, we had a meeting of the South Fork Water Board last Wednesday? Monday, excuse me. It's usually on Wednesday. It was Monday. And things are moving along with South Fork. And everybody can turn your tap on with assuredness that clean water will come out.
Thank you, Council President. This is looking back at my calendar to remember what I did. It was quite a busy time since our last meeting. For me, I attended the Youth Town Hall in Happy Valley and enjoyed that. Talked about youth in government and getting involved. Attended a couple of retirement parties for our police staff, along with several City Councilors. Attended a Cub Scout meeting of West Lynn students. And then attended a local official advisory committee meeting of the DLCD, Department of Land Conservation Development, where I serve on that committee representing the cities of the metro region. And then had Thanksgiving with family. So it was great. And anybody else? Councilor Bright, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the working group for the Vision 43, and we had a really robust discussion. We're getting very close to starting to have code changes and zoning changes to discuss with the community. And I had, oh, something I would like to bring up, hopefully in a work session in January, would be taking a look at some of the city-owned properties and seeing if we can apply some kind of a conservation zoning overlay on some of the properties to ensure that they stay and are maintained the way that we would like them to.
Thank you for that. And we'll work coordinating a time to put that on an agenda with City Manager. Oh, go ahead.
If no one else has anything to announce, I would like to request that we have a discussion in a work session, bringing up the topic of flock cameras again, because that is something that was tabled for discussion. But due to the concerns I shared earlier and the increase in cities taking action, whether they've turned off lock camera systems they've purchased or other statements, I think it's time for the city of West Lynn to discuss the topic. And surveillance in general, maybe even potentially propose to seek to limit future technology in that area of surveillance. And I'd like to have a community discussion, or at least a council discussion about that topic. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Council President. I see City Manager is writing, writing some notes, so we'll schedule that as well. Any, Council Bonnington, anything to report, or we can move on?
Nothing that hasn't been covered. But as long as we're making scheduling requests, I think it is long, long past time that we talk about the dispensary prohibition.
Well, this was a productive Mayor and Council Reports for the City Manager. We've got three items to take a look at and find some time. And appreciate everybody bringing things to the table today. So with that, we can move on then to proclamations. The first proclamation will be the Pearl Harbor Day proclamation read by Council President Baumgartner, who shared with me she has a family connection to Pearl Harbor.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas on December 7th, 1941, our nation suffered one of the most devastating attacks ever to befall the American people. In less than two hours, the bombs that rained on Pearl Harbor robbed thousands of men, women, and children of their lives, thrusting our country into the greatest conflict the world has ever known. And whereas, in his address to Congress, President Franklin D. Roosevelt affirmed that with confidence in our armed forces, with the unbounding determination of our people, we will gain the inevitable triumph. And whereas, this attack led President Roosevelt to call on Congress to declare an act of war the following day, stating December 7th, 1941 would be a day which will live in infamy. And whereas, millions stood up and shipped out to meet that call to service, fighting heroically on Europe's distant shores and pressing inland by island by island across the Pacific. And whereas, millions more carried out the fight in factories and shipyards here at home, building the arsenal of democracy that propelled America to the victory President Roosevelt foresaw. And whereas, on every front, we faced down impossible odds, and out of the ashes of conflict, America rose more prepared than ever to meet the challenges of the day, sure that there was no trial we could not overcome. And whereas, we pay solemn tribute to America's sons and daughters who made the ultimate sacrifice. Let us also reaffirm that their legacy will always burn bright, whether in the memory of those who knew them, the spirit of service that guides our men and women in uniform today, or the heart of the country they kept strong and free. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of West Lynn that December 7th, 2025 is Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. And we encourage our community to observe this solemn day of remembrance and to honor our military, past and present. And I will just mention the name of my husband's aunt, who was killed in Pearl Harbor, Alice Baumgartner.
Thank you, Council President. I will read the impaired driving prevention month proclamation. Whereas, every year, thousands of lives are needlessly lost on our roadways because of alcohol and drug impaired driving. These are avoidable tragedies that leave deep holes in our families and communities. And whereas, impaired driving is a public health concern because it not only puts the driver at risk, but also endangers lives and safety of passengers and others sharing the road. Whereas, we remember the victims and honor their memory by making the responsible decision to drive sober and ensure others do the same. And whereas, while driving well impaired by any substance, legal or illegal, is dangerous. Alcohol, illicit drugs, or even over the counter and prescription medications can impair a driver's judgment, decrease coordination, and slow the reaction time necessary to safely operate a motor vehicle. And whereas, alcohol impaired driving causes over 11,000 deaths each year. And whereas, through the exercise of good judgment, responsibility, and a commitment to never drive well under the influence, every community member can play a role in the fight against impaired driving. And whereas, we must share our appreciation for law enforcement officers who risk their lives each day to keep our community safe while keeping impaired drivers off of our roadways. So thank you to our West Lynn Police Department, who take that work very seriously. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of West Lynn that December 2025 is impaired driving prevention month, and we urge all community members to make responsible decisions and take appropriate measures to prevent impaired driving. Thank you. Dated the second day of December 2025. And anything else? On the topic of proclamations, any other comments? Okay, well, with that, moving right along into the meat of the agenda. The first item is Operations Center Financial Plan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Hope you all had a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you for showing up for the last couple of meetings of our year. The main item today on the operations facility topic is question of final funding mix. It seems like we've had Morgan and Eric here a number of times in recent weeks, talking about the design of the facility, the cost of the facility, some funding options. Council spent quite a bit of time in November working on the funding for this and other city needs. The last meeting that you took action on this was November 18th. You voted to approve a design, included a cost estimate, and requested that we move forward on a full faith and credit obligation. And we are working on that. We have our team here in the room that is, that is working on this project, that may be able to assist you with this conversation today. Really, what we're here to talk about is how will the costs be allocated? And would the council like to take any, any actions to supplement any of the funding sources that are proposed? In the memo, we have the funding mix that was discussed at your last meeting, with an extra emphasis on the Streets Fund, paying almost, almost a million dollars a year in debt service on this project. And the other four funds, Sewer, Storm, Parks, and Water, paying over $560,000 a year. So the debt service on this 40 million, $45 million project is significant. And we've talked about impacts on infrastructure provision from some of these funds. We've also talked about the worrying state of our general fund. And so in the staff report, we presented a couple of options that are basically just summaries of conversations we've already had with you. Like going through the options one at a time, we could pay for the project using existing revenues. The existing revenues are adequate, maybe, to pay for this project, as is the general fund is probably the biggest concern. Morgan and Eric and the team have done a tremendous amount of work forecasting utility fund revenue and projects. And utility funds are probably a little more certain about the, their ability to pay for this long-term debt. The general fund, again, is, is a concern because we have projected future deficits in the general fund that impact our ability to provide services. So at your meetings in November, the focus on budget, you talked about possible operating levy for this project, or you talked about utility fees for this project. And we detail both of those, including some timeline considerations in the staff report. The challenge with the bond measure is timing of it, doing the work to get it on. The twice-a-year election cycle could have an implication, or certainly would have an implication, for the timing of this project. Either the May or November election would cause us to miss the dry weather construction season unless we went ahead with the project anyway and then had a supplemental bond measure. There's some challenges of that, I think, in terms of public perception and understanding of the, of the project and the need for the funding if we were to do so. But bonds, certainly a very legitimate source of funding for a major construction project, often used. The other, the other idea that we have discussed is utility fees. As you know, we have certain of our utilities are limited by charter to a 5% increase. And that 5%, which we have been using year to year, really just keeps us up with our ability to provide some infrastructure in those funds at all. However, the Streets Fund and the Parks Utility are not similarly limited. So both of those utility fees are options for you if you were, choose to use them. We showed you in November, we showed you that a dollar a month on a utility bill generates about $108,000 a year. So that's a rough sense of scale. I mentioned earlier that the general fund component of the projected debt service is about $560,000 a year. So therefore, between five and six dollars a month of a utility bill would pay for the general funds component of this, of this project, should you choose to go there. We did provide a recommendation in the staff report, and the recommendation was based over on your previous discussions. It seemed that you were interested in finding ways to minimize the impact on the general fund. And considering the timeline, our recommendation is that a utility fee charged for this would be the simplest and most timely way to manage the cost implications. And if you, depending on what level of fee we were, we look at, you might be able to make some inroads into the stabilization funding needed in the general fund in general for long term. So, you know, it's obvious that many households are concerned about costs. And bottom line, cost increases are happening in a variety of ways, including in utilities that strike your monthly balance. Costs arising for household goods, so it's not a simple question that you have in front of you. You have made this project a priority. You've talked about it as an essential need to continue to provide services to West Lynn. So by that metric, it feels to me like a utility bill for this, for this project makes some sense. There's a direct nexus to me to the service that we're providing and the funding mechanism used to pay for it. So I think it's a, I think it's a reasonable solution. There are, if you go down that path, there are a lot of possible options for timing, for communication, for asking the community versus making decisions. There's a lot of ways to move on this. Typically, there's not much conversation that happens with the community on our annual fee increases on the utility bill. It's not a, not a typical thing that we ask about, poll about, survey about. This may feel different to you, or it may feel similar to those increases to you. I think our interest, considering the long-term payment cycle for this, it's not as important, whether it happens January 1st, or March 1st, or even June 1st, you know, that kind of thing. But really, is it in place for the long-term health of the funds? So that's a, that's a broad, that's a broad summary of the discussions you've had and the recommendation in the packet. As I said, we have our dream team in the back to answer any questions you have about the project, about the costs, about the health of the general fund. Lauren likes talking about that as much as I do. And we are here to help and to have a work session conversation with you. When you made your action at the last meeting, the, the result was bringing back the full faith and credit. At your next meeting, that is planned for next Tuesday, that action can go forward, even if you don't have a final answer on this, I think, or, or not, depending on how much conversation you want to have and how cautious you want to, how cautiously you want to approach this project. So I hope that, I hope that makes sense. I hope that provides you with a, with a foundation for this discussion. And I will stop there for now.
Thank you for that. Great overview of where we're at. I can just open the floor up for initial questions before we jump into the conversation. Council Groner.
Thank you for that presentation. I decided to look at my own bill and see how it affected me. I think my property is somewhere close to the median West Lynn, so it may be pretty typical. And what I see is that I'm currently paying for parks and street maintenance $41.93 a month, and that would go to $47.10 per month. So, yes, I think that's not an unreasonable thing to replace a facility that's what, something like 70, 75 years old and is undersized in a residential neighborhood where I thought about calling it an urban slum, but that may be a little too strong, but it's not too far from that. And to replace by a modern, right-sized facility, I think is a reasonable fee. So thank you.
Thank you for that, Council Groner. A couple of questions for me. Do you, do you know what the percentage increase that $5 would be? I didn't run the, I was trying to run the calculation, like the average, is that like a 15%, 10%?
I do, I do have that. I don't have that immediately in front of me, based on what Council Groner just said. It's around, on those two fees, it would be, well, the parks fee itself, I think, is in the realm of, what's the parks fee, Councilor?
That was $23.40.
Yeah, so $5.
Yeah. Well, and street, street maintenance was $18.53.
Right. I guess it depends whether you're talking about street maintenance fee and parks fee or just one.
Just a, just the parks fee. I mean, we're really talking about the parks fee to an extent today. 21, okay. Okay. And the other question I had was just on the legislative history. I kind of feel like there's two separate decisions here. We don't have to make them both today, but the Operations Center is before us, and there's also the issue of complying with legislative history. But could you talk a little bit about that? Or?
Sure. On the Parks Utility Fee, we found out that when that fee was created in 2007, I believe it was, that the City Council's intention was to pay for 100% of costs related to parks maintenance. That has, that has slipped a little bit so that it's only, it's falling about half a million dollars a year short of fully funding parks maintenance activities. So that's, again, around $5 a month short. So a $5, a $5 increase in the fee would catch up with that. But if you were to do both things, that is, pay the parks fund share of the project and catch up, it'd be approximately $10 or $11 a month total. And you could do those over any sort of time schedule to start making inroads again. Or just do one of the pieces.
Thank you for that. I'd love to see legislative history also, if you have.
Happy to find that out. Yeah, we have the, I have the council minutes on my desk. They're, they're great reading.
Sounds good.
As always.
I'm sure they are. Council Bright and then Council Bonnington.
I was going to kind of bring up the same thing that the Mayor did. I look at the Parks Maintenance Fee, and I look that we have two components to that. And the first one is to raise the fee sufficient to cover the cost of parks maintenance, which it's currently not doing. And then the second part of that would be to cover the park share of the debt service for the facility. I think it would behoove us to go ahead and update the rate as soon as we can, maybe with an effective January 1 date, for the covering of the cost of parks maintenance. And another thing that I think that would be beneficial is having that rate increase already in place when we go out for the full faith and credit bonds. We've got a bit more just already in place revenue to help cover that cost. And I think the rating agencies would look at that favorably.
Got that financial expertise from your background. Thank you for that, those thoughts. Council Bonnington?
Yeah, two things. There's a, a question that I've been asked to, to ask, which is, there's a property on Willamette Falls Drive that I believe we're using as for storage of some sort. I'm not seeing it on the city-owned properties map.
There's a leased property from PG over there.
That would be it.
Yeah.
Would, would the opening of the operations complex mean no longer needing to use that and have any important or at all consequential financial impact whatsoever?
Sorry, can you come up?
Come up to the front.
I appreciate that question.
That, I hadn't even thought of that. That's, that is a good question. Thank you.
Thanks, Bo.
Yes, use of that site is an example of how we have to use and use various satellite locations throughout the city to store materials with the new operations building. That would bring all that material storage onsite, and we would no longer use it for that purpose. We currently rent it and lease it for that purpose, so it'd be up to the city if we needed to continue that lease for other purposes.
Morgan, do you know off the top of your head what the cost of that lease is?
I do not, but I could look it up quickly. It is not, it is not very much.
Thank you. And then I am curious what, I don't think we should ever use other cities as the barometer for what we do. I think we should try to do better in this regard. But what is their process when they raise a fee? Do they just let people know? Do they even bother doing that? And it just shows up in the mail? What can we do there? And, and how can we be, what, what anyone else would do?
Councilor, I would say it varies. Different cities take different approaches at different times. Regular, routine, yearly increases usually have, as far as I'm aware, no, no outreach at all. I think I have seen some cities create increases with very little public involvement at all. If the, if the notion of the fee is to cover the costs, the council is responsible for overseeing the costs and making sure there is a paid. And some councils have done that. I think where you normally see, where you normally see some sort of conversation is when a significant increase is proposed, either for some particular reason or because they've fallen far behind. We recently saw, maybe you saw in the tidings this past week, Wilsonville is doing some very significant increases to the utility fees, somewhere in the neighborhood of, I think it was 35%? Lauren, did the Wilsonville utility cost, that we were just looking at that story? And they're holding an open house or two on that to explain the need and, but that's, that's a pretty significant increase.
I think I like that.
It's year over year, multiple years of that.
That explaining seems like an important thing to do. Not necessarily asking, because that's, that's a power that's explicitly granted to us in the Charter to increase these fees. But explaining it and having that conversation about why it's so necessary, regardless of what we do, seems like the important approach here.
Thank you, Council Bonnington. Thank you for that. Council President Baumgartner, you haven't spoken on the topic. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think everyone has done a great job covering any of the questions that I had about this particular topic, although I am curious about the falling behind on the parks fee and how we can prevent that from happening. Is there? How did that happen?
I, I think at some point, the knowledge that it was meant to cover 100% of the cost was lost. And so we did get a little bit behind. It's a, I think it wouldn't be that hard to put into our annual budget review, budget development, or biennial to make sure that that question is looked at and covered.
That would be great.
I, I completely agree.
Just to avoid what Wilsonville is maybe? I mean, I have no idea what the situation is there.
Before it gets too far out of whack. Yeah.
But I, I think people understand incremental increases in their utility fees. Having a huge or significant increase, if I was not sitting here and having such close availability to explanations, I might look at that and say, who's been asleep at the switch? So that's all. Thank you.
You, you mentioned Wilsonville, and that's good for, for context there. I just looked up what they're doing and saw a news article about it, and they're having to raise their sewer rates by 28% each year for, for several years to pay for projects. So compared to, we've got, basically, we have done a nice job of being, not raising rates, really, other than the initial 5% that we do every year. Although I do remember at one point, we raised the Parks Maintenance Fee to hire a new worker. But that, and that probably may have contributed a little bit because we weren't, we didn't have the, all the, all the, but covering the full amount at that point when we hired somebody else. So that's the only time I can really remember us raising it, raising a fee to pay for a service, a project. Council Bright, I have a question for you before you go. How I was thinking of this was, was funding the project first with, with the fee increase, and then phasing in the fee to cover the parks maintenance over time. You proposed a different, the opposite of that, and I was wondering if there was a reason for your thinking of phasing them in that way?
Thank you for that question. I, I guess my thought process on this is the, covering the cost of the project could... could involve an increase in the street maintenance fee as well as the parks fee. And that would be something that I feel like we should go to the community with a bit of a conversation to, as Counselor Bonnington said, as kind of an informational thing, letting them know what's going to happen, and then also not kind of nickel-and-diming them to death. But looking at the portion of parks maintenance that is being covered out of general fund property tax versus the fee that was intended to cover that, I feel like that's a change that we can make as immediately as possible to get that piece of it covered. That's just my thought on that.
Thanks. And then you had, oh, that covered your thought. Okay, thanks. I'm glad, Council President, go ahead.
Thank you. I was just wondering if, kind of on the same vein of educating or communicating, if we go ahead and do, as Counselor Bright suggested, about catching the parks fee up, maybe in the next newsletter or the biannual newsletter, some version, maybe both, explain just, we're catching up with our parks fee that we haven't adjusted for however long it's been, which I can't say off the top of my head, but I'm sure we can find out. And it's probably been a while.
So, what's the timeline on when we would need to have a decision made for the Operations Center funding piece of the puzzle?
Well, we're hoping to go ahead with the full faith and credit on the timeline that you're aware of in December. I think the sooner that we could have a conversation about the, about supplementing the funds, to the extent that you're interested in having that conversation. I think, I think a reasonable timeline of a couple of months would work for that. I think the question is, are you comfortable moving ahead with the project without having made a decision about the, about any supplemental funding? That is, are you, A, either confident that we can cover it as is, and/or B, that you'll work on that over time and supplement it? So, if one or both of those are true, then we can move ahead on the timeline. Lauren may want to address the question of issuing the FFCO, as you've talked a little bit about this, about our investor confidence in the city without having anything in place.
Yeah, I don't think necessarily that it would be a huge problem not to have it in place, but I think it will definitely, as Counselor Bright said, make it more desirable if we have a plan on how we are increasing revenues, especially in the general fund, to pay for that debt service. So, it doesn't necessarily have to be implemented by the time that we issue the debt, but if we have some council vote or something like that, that says that, you know, on this timeline, we're going to increase this, that would be sufficient to help make it more desirable. And in regards to the timing of these increases, we do increase half of our utility rates in January and half of them in July, as it is, in accordance with our normal schedule. So, doing it on the same timeline or at the same time might be more reasonable, so it's not just a random increase in the middle of the year. Obviously, we would have to calculate, generally, we go up, you know, 5% each year, just historically with what we've been doing with the utility rates. But I think we could, we could figure out maybe an increase in January, like Counselor Bright said, and then have a, some council decision to increase in July for the bond, to pay for the bond. Or sooner, if you would like to.
Yeah. Appreciate that perspective. Any follow-up, Counselor Bright? And you also mentioned the street fund, too, which we hadn't talked about.
Right.
You've got to look at that.
And I think, back to my thing about getting the parks maintenance up to covering 100%, if we could do that one right away, then the other parts that we're doing, which would be street and additional for parks to cover the debt, would be kind of lumped together in the same decision process.
Counselor Groner, go ahead, and then we'll go to Counselor Bonnington.
Okay, I'm trying to understand the cash flows that go along with the full faith and credit. So, on the day we sign that agreement, we are handed, what is it, approximately $45 million, which presumably goes into some sort of account. We're returning some interest, but probably a lesser rate of interest than we're paying on the bond, right?
Yes. Otherwise, if it earns more, then we have to pay taxes on that. There's arbitrage issues. So, generally, we don't want to, I mean.
On the other hand, the actual construction process doesn't expend all the money on day one. There's a, I don't know how long it will take to construct that, but we're probably talking at least a year and maybe two years to construct it. And money will be paid out to the contractors over that time. So, I'm wondering, do we need to borrow the entire amount on day one? Or can we borrow essentially something to match the payments to the contractors?
Generally, we borrow the entire amount. The extra is fairly minimal. I mean, on $45 million, it's a little bit more, but again, it's, you know, we've already started expending some of the funds, and so some of it will be a reimbursement. So, immediately, that will go towards like reimbursement, and then it won't be, it won't be gaining the interest on that, and then the interest on the other amount is, I mean, barely minimal.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to understand that.
Counselor Bonnington, go ahead.
Well, I think that brings up an interesting point. If you were trying to say that maybe we could do something like a $25 million full faith and credit, and then talk about how we do the second half, so we buy some time to actually have this conversation about whether this should be a bond or a fee? That's an interesting option, if it's possible, that I hadn't thought about. Was that, was that what you were?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that something that could even happen? Does it?
I think Carol has something she would like to say, that may be transferred to her first. She was.
Thank you. I think when you are entering into a project like this, you want the certainty of having the funding available when you need it. And there are also costs associated with issuing debt. And so, some of it is fixed amounts, and some of it is percentages. So, you would incur additional costs if you did bonded debt into tranches. Now, if you have some really big projects, I mean, there could be a rationale, if you have, say, a group of projects, there could be a rationale for issuing debt in tranches to take care of the projects over time. But since this is one building that we need to have completed to be able to use it, having the certainty of incurring that $45 million debt in one tranche, I think, is preferable.
Thank you.
I would agree with that.
I appreciate the suggestion and discussion of all ideas on funding this. I am, I'm, we've talked some about bond measures, and I personally am open to pursuing one, but not for the Operations Center, only because we have to have this project. And I think, like, putting it out to a vote, basically, like, gives the community a choice, like, yes or no? Do you want to fund the Operations Center? But like, we don't really have a choice as a city. As leaders of the city, and as Public Works, and all the departments that need it, everybody wants the streets to be maintained. Everybody wants, you know, the parks to be maintained. And I think that it's something that we can just decide, and these increases that we're talking about to fund, this are pretty reasonable, especially if certain ones are phased in over the course of time, and given the city's careful financial planning to make sure that we're not always, you know, raising rates a ton every year. And it's, you know, a targeted situation, where people know exactly what they're getting, and they're going to start seeing the construction activity going on, too. So, I'm, I would, I'm open to moving forward with the discussion of fee increases. And I'm okay with doing the parks maintenance fee to make sure that it's covering what it's supposed to, based on legislative history. I would like to see the legislative history at the decision-making meeting, and then maybe having some community outreach about the, educating about the Operations Center project and what we're having to do to fund it. I'm not sure what that looks like. I don't know if it's the level that needs to be like a town hall type of meeting, but it's maybe just some informational information, with the opportunity to provide comments back to the City Council about it.
Could be at a council meeting. Just to make sure people know that a decision's going to be made at some point, and try to explain it, share the news, and give folks an opportunity to come and talk to you about it. I actually, if I may, I actually think, I was thinking about this over the weekend. It's pretty remarkable, actually, that we're having this discussion in the way that we're having it. I think it's a really good indicator of very wise financial planning over time, that we're talking about, the city with our financial abilities, that we're talking about funding a project this large, and only really talking about sort of supplementing some funds around the edges to get it done. What this is, is a result of many years of careful thought and planning, so that you've had the Public Works, the engineering team, really thinking about this for years and years. So, they're not bringing you, we have this urgent construction project, and this urgent operations. You know, everything has been staged. We've been saving money. We've been planning on doing this. So, to fund a $45 million project, and we're only sitting here talking about maybe a $5 a month increase to get that done, it's actually quite impressive, I think. So, I think there's a, I think there's a good story. It's a nuanced story. But talking to the community, you're like, wow, you're getting a lot of bagging for your buck, because we are guarding every penny, and we do need a little bit more to close the gap and get it done. But we've been watching the money very well and planning for this, and so the impact is actually quite low. So, I know that's a hard, it's not easy to sell, I'm not talking about sales, but to describe nuanced things like that, people are just going to, some people will just see, man, five bucks, I can't, I don't want that. But I do think we have a great story to tell.
And you mentioned, you didn't even mention the city's overall financial picture with the low property tax rate. Even though we're one of the lowest in the region, we're still able.
Even though we don't have industrial district, even though we, you know, all these things we don't have.
We're still able to fund this with the marginal impact.
Every hundred years, we can do a project like this.
Yeah. Appreciate that perspective. I'm glad to know you were thinking about these things on the weekend also. That's all.
Good.
Over the holiday, too.
Sometimes in the middle of the night, I'm thinking about full faith and credit.
I've said my piece to everybody, so do you know where I stand? I'm happy to open up with the rest of council as well on the, what to do.
I was just going to suggest that a photo gallery of the current Ops Center would be pictures worth 1,000 words. I don't think it would take much for people to understand the need for this project, especially if they have photos.
Agreed. We talked last, in our November meeting, we talked about maybe putting a part of your Westland website. You know, it would be really nice, as we begin to go into these conversations, potentially in like the January, February timeframe, to have a site to direct people to, to kind of learn more about the project and any sort of communications about this funding issue. Because totally agree. I mean, we've all been in there. We've been in the tour, and we can open it up to the community a little bit for some info.
Could be our next month's art in this room, is pictures of the existing facilities. Be a different one.
Counselor Bonnington.
I've got a video like that, that's about halfway edited, and I have not finished it, because I've, I felt like I got too flattering of shots in some ways. And, yeah, so a little bit more content is needed for me to be able to finish that, but it's going to very nicely be able to tell that story. So, definitely an important component to this. I think there's, there's some part of me that's been thinking, it would have been nice to do this as a bond in the sense that we could then not worry about any, any shortfalls, because we would be taking this project out of our regular budget. We could then do some of the deferred maintenance and have other funds freed up to put towards other projects. But I think we're too far down the road to look at it that way, unfortunately.
It's not a given. It'll pass.
Well, that's always true, but I think we've always got to take our best shot at certain things. But I think we would have a fantastic shot at it if we find it properly. But again, I think we're too far down the road, so I'd love to definitely pursue the parks portion of it and figure out the rest.
The water line bond didn't pass.
That's true.
We need a water line, so I don't know how much more compelling a need for funds could be than the whole water line for the city, so.
True. And to be fair, on the water line, we didn't have a strong campaign for it. We were kind of letting the community decide on that issue. So, stories can be different with campaigns and, but, and effort from the City Council leadership level. So, but yes, appreciate that, the discussion there, those trade-offs and pros and cons and risks, no matter how you put it. Did you have, Lauren, you raised your hand a few minutes ago. Please jump in.
I think, as I mentioned before, you know, with the timeline, and I was just thinking about the communication. Generally, when we do our utility bill increases, which I said, half of the utilities are increased in January, and half of them are increased in July, that's the effective date as of January 1st and as of July 1st. But really, it doesn't go on the bills until February and August, because we bill a month behind, virtually. It might be, if we're thinking about increasing these fees, it might be good for council, and you are thinking about doing both the increase in the parks maintenance fee for, to get it up to the total amount, and then also the increase to the parks maintenance fee, and potentially a street maintenance fee. It might be good to do it all at once in the next month or so, before those February bills go out, doing a resolution to increase those, and not necessarily that we have to increase them all for February, but we could implement some of them in February and some of them in August. And then the communication can be coupled with the communication that we have when we have standard increases, because we do usually put those in our, like, weekly newsletter and things like that. And so, we can add something to those, you know, this is our standard 5% increases to keep up with costs. And then, in addition, here are these additional costs, and here's why we have increased them. Just a thought from like the communication standpoint and the timeline standpoint. So, I think it would be good to, you know, kind of make that decision, and not necessarily that you have to phase it in all at once, but phase it in over time, but make the decision early on. Again, that will help with the investors to see that we have implemented something to cover that general fund portion and potentially the streets portion.
So, just to confirm, so you're suggesting that we have, vote on a resolution and like pretend in January, or talking about, that basically includes all of these increases that we've been talking about, but the timeline in there can be specified as they'll be phased in over time?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understand. Okay.
And then, and then the earliest we could implement that would be the February bill. So, you could make, if you had any that you wanted to implement as of January 1st, we could do that, even though it might get approved mid-January. It still wouldn't go on the bills until February.
So, the preference for the finance is to not do, for example, two or three different resolutions over, you know, like, one resolution for the parks maintenance fee to bring it up to the level we want it to be, and then another resolution later to fund the Operations Center. So, is what I'm, like, kind of have one kind of package for ease of communication and implementation.
Yes. And also, more so, just raising the rates consistently at the times that we normally do versus a random off-month, like, raising them in May instead. We get a large influx of calls after the rates increase. And I think it would be good to be able to have the communication in place for that month, and then get those calls and say, yes, we raised the rates because of these things. The council decided these things. And you're also, you also see an increase in August. And you're also, you also see an increase in August versus having it different months than our normal increases.
Thank you for that overview. I feel like it's important to communicate about how our, how the city, how us as a city council really have not raised rates before in this, you know, at least not since that parks maintenance fee discussion we had several years ago during the budget during COVID. You know, we just to put to point out that, you know, we don't, we don't do that very often. We're careful with rates and also have communications ready about the actual project, like a landing page for the project with the video and what whatnot. Those does my two cents. Counselor Bright, what are your thoughts on what the finance director just?
I really appreciate your perspective because I know it's you and your staff that end up fielding all of those calls. And so that that makes a big difference. And even when people would call for something that came in in February, you can also give people a heads up, you're going to see some additional increases in your July bill.
So just to put it into context, it's what we're talking about is basically a $5 increase to the parks maintenance fee to cover, make it cover the cost of parks maintenance, which was by the legislative history, and a $5 fee to cover the cost of the operations center for the for the general fund parks maintenance component. And then Counselor Bright and others have brought up the taking a look at the street fund also, which we haven't discussed or looked at different amounts. I just wanted to make sure that was clear to the communities, if folks watched the meeting or folks write about the meeting so that they know that that's, we're not talking about like, for example, what they're doing in Wilsonville where it's like $30, you know, per month. We're talking about smaller amount, not that it doesn't impact folks, but just want to make sure everybody has clarity on the numbers who watched the meeting. So any thoughts on, thoughts on bringing it back in January for a kind of a vote? What kind of process folks would like to go through to engage the community, you know, on that before that vote? Counselor Bright?
I like bringing it back in January and maybe also in the weekly newsletter that it's kind of brought out more than once so that people know that that's a meeting that they can come to and share their thoughts with us. I mean, a lot of times we do these things, we expect a lot of public input and public comments and we don't get any. And and so just making sure that we have put it out there so the community knows that that's when we'll be talking about that topic.
Thank you, counselor. And I would, I would put it in the newsletter and maybe even have like some that you could click to email the city council or share your thoughts on it or survey box we survey we could collect too, just so we have a compilation of thoughts. Counselor Bonington?
Yeah, I think as long as we're explaining this correctly, like why this is necessary and the fact that even with a raise like this, it still doesn't bring us to the middle of the pack for our peer cities in terms of what their monthly fees are. That information available for people ahead of time. And then I think we'll maybe not be surprised with the reaction because it is kind of, I don't know, it it's proportionately much smaller than what a lot of cities are putting forward right now. But at the same time, I think we need to make sure that this is as much as we're going to need and there's not the potential that we're going to have to come back and ask for any more whatsoever on this topic. We've been, I guess, over several decades kind of shy apparently about raising any sorts of rates and that can be good until you actually need that money. And we very much are in the position where it's it's becoming evident that we've needed that money before and we really need it now. So we should, we should be on top of raising these over time and not just when it becomes emergent.
Thank you for that, counselor. Any other thoughts or head nods with the kind of general direction of the of the process? Mr. City Manager, do you feel like you have a direction on a potential? I think the consensus is to bring back something in January for a vote on a resolution with a with some public outreach in advance to relate to the project and the need for the fee increases and the levels.
Yep, exactly. No, I think you you all did a great job summarizing it and I didn't have to do anything. So thank you.
Okay. Well, anything else on the this, on the topic of the operations center? Okay.
Have we thought about naming it?
Have we thought about naming it? I don't know. We haven't thought about that. But.
I just wanted to thank all of you, all of staff for providing us with good information that we can help us make a decision because it is a pretty big topic for us that and will impact the community mostly in positive ways, I hope.
Agreed. Couldn't have said it better and looking forward to seeing this go continue to move forward. After you go in the old operations center that we're currently using, you realize how important it is to for the city's health and safety to modernize this facility. And pretty cool that we've never done something like this before and get to be part of the the process. Anything else? Did you have a, okay, couldn't tell if you had comment there. So we will continue that conversation in next week, we're going to vote on the FFCO revenue authorization to secure the funding for the project. And then in January, we will consider the rate scenarios to fund it.
Wonderful. Thank you. Appreciate the conversation.
And thank you, counsel, for bringing your courage and thoughts and ideas to the to the table. The next item and the final item is the severely rent burdened housing discussion. Always a sobering conversation to learn about the rent in Westland. As a renter myself, I pay the utility bills and I also pay a high amount of rent, so.
We do. So we'll welcome our community development director, Steve Koper, to the table. Steve increasingly taking over projects, which we love. This is our annual holiday present to the Westland community, a report on the challenges of affording housing in this community and certainly a very, a very worthwhile time to be thinking about this in the holiday season. Steve, I appreciate you handling this one and the floor is yours.
Thank you, John. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It is good to be here and it is a timely topic and so I'm glad that you've taken some time out of your schedules to listen to it. I have a little presentation prepared that is based on the materials that you have in your packet. All right. So the first part that we'll talk about is why we're here today. We're holding a severely rent burden meeting because of the city's status as severely rent burden. And I think you all know this, but for anyone out there listening or for those of you that don't remember from last year, what makes a city considered severely rent burden is that we have more than 25% of the renter population in Westland that is paying more than 50% of their gross income on rent. And so for this year, we have the Oregon Housing and Community Services provided us with the 2023 data reporting, which identified Westland as having a 34% of the renter households as severely rent burdened. And you can see on the table here, some of our neighboring cities in comparison that also have a fairly high rent burden. And the last point I'll just make is is that this is based on American Community Survey data. So moving on, what we're here to discuss, so we're holding a meeting that is consistent with the original House Bill 4006, the Oregon administrative rule and Oregon revised statutes that implement that original House Bill. And so what we'll talk about today is the causes and consequences of severe rent burden and being a severely rent burdened city, a little discussion on the barriers to reducing rent burdens and then possible solutions to reduce the number of rent burdened households. Since we met as a city last year to discuss the severely rent burden issue, the city's adopted a housing production strategy. And so some of the discussion today is going to center around the findings of that housing production strategy, which also with its actions that were recommended as part of that strategy, provide some of the fodder for the discussion today, particularly vis a vis the possible solutions. So some of the high level findings from the housing production strategy from May of 2025 are that there are a lot of people, particularly in the low to very low income level that need housing. I'll talk a little bit about it, even though this meeting is about renter households, there is also some housing need among owner households as well. And so I think it is important to not lose sight of that issue as well. So nearly three quarters of the renter households, again, turning back to renter households in Westland are cost burdened. So just to back up a step, 34% of households in Westland are severely rent burdened, but nearly three quarters are rent burdened, meaning that they pay over 30% of their gross income on housing. So definitely a very sobering statistic. And then last point here is that, as you, I think, all well know, based on the previous 2021 housing capacity analysis, which was then contextualized through the housing production strategy, Westland has identified to need at least 1,000 new dwelling units over the next 20 years to meet projected demand. And at some point in the future, we'll probably come back with some additional updated information about the Oregon housing production strategy and then metro regional implementation of that housing production strategy because ultimately the next time that Westland does a housing capacity analysis in the next three to five years, that number is also likely to be much greater. That was based on older methodologies, so something just to keep in mind as we go forward in this discussion. So just some of the tables that were also, again, in the staff report here, as you can see, you know, more of the units in Westland are single family detached and then fewer and fewer of the multifamily units, as we'll see on the following slides. And as you could probably guess, just using common sense, that more affordable units tend to be smaller multifamily units and larger single family detached units tend to be more costly. And so when you have a breakdown like this, it's obviously harder to provide units for people who have less income available to put towards rent. Again, kind of similar data, just identifying some of the different housing inventory by type that's available. You do see a fairly healthy share here of single family detached housing available for rent. Also a fairly decent size of, you know, larger, I guess I'd call them like a complex or a, you know, garden style apartment unit with the five plus units of multifamily residential. And then definitely a fairly small share of single family attached. This is where I think I would also point out that particularly when you think about, you know, ownership opportunities, not just rental and people transitioning through the housing spectrum, having lower price or these potentially lower priced units like a town home available for people to buy to get into that housing ladder is also important to, not necessarily a topic for discussion today, but just something to point out as we discuss these intertwined and interrelated issues. Here's the big one, obviously, this, so this table is from the housing production strategy from earlier this calendar year, the 50% or more, which is the specific metric that we're here to talk about, was 31% based on the American Community Service, excuse me, American Community Survey data from 2022. So between 2022 and 2023, it went up a little bit, as I'm sure everyone is experiencing. And as we talked about in the last work session item, you know, costs are going up all around us for everything, so it should be no surprise that, you know, rents are increasing and that also people have less money to spend towards rent. So it is, you know, unfortunate, but also it is not surprising, I suppose. Let's see, I think the, this is the last data table we have here. So again, just kind of representing that number that I talked about on the first housing production strategy slide, the 1,005 units of housing needed over the next 20 years for Westland. And then this table breaks it out in terms of the need by income level. So as you can see, from kind of the top three areas, low income to extremely low income, there's, you know, a fairly substantial unit need there, you know, well over 300. And then you have also, you know, interestingly, again, not part of the topic for discussion today, but still a fairly high need for housing units in the upper income level, which I found interesting. The other note there that I'll say is that this table was older and as you can see in the asterisk note in the bottom, was based on essentially extrapolated 2020 data. As you all know, reading the news and and being out in the world, interest rates are not what they were in 2020. And so while income maybe has gone up a little bit, the ability to afford the prices indicated on this table is probably not at all representative at this point. And so you would also expect that there'd probably potentially maybe be still a fairly high need for units in the upper income levels, but you would possibly see a shift of the of the breakdown here. So again, just something to be aware of as we think about potential policy prescriptions to these issues that, you know, more and more people are facing the issues here. And again, what we're here to talk about today is renter, but I think that there's an argument to be made that some of the same dynamics and factors also affect people's ability to obtain purchased homes within their budget and within a price range. And to that end, one of the other statistics that is not shown here in the presentation but was part of the housing production strategy is that when you combine renter households and ownership households, still about a third of Westland residents total, so a third of our 27,000 are cost burdened, that is to say that both owners and renters spend more than 30% of their income towards housing, which is again, a very sobering statistic. So what that brings us to, as we're wrapping up this presentation, is that we have the housing production strategy. And so those are the strategies that I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation that were identified. I'll just also note for council's benefit, the first three actions on this table and then eight, nine, and 11 were part of the city's grant requests of the State Department of Land Conservation and Development to have a grant awarded to fund further work to implement these actions. The number one, two, and nine were awarded through a direct consultant grant so that those work products are covered by one consultant. And then the other, which is three, eight, and 11, the city requested more money than it got, so there will have to be some decisions made as far as which of those strategies are further pursued at this point and then tabled for future discussion. So I just wanted to mention that, that there is work afoot to try to actually do what we're here to discuss in this meeting, which is to explore and to create solutions to the rent burden issue. So last slide here, just some talking points to bring it all together based on the why of why we're here and what we're here to discuss. So the causing, the causes and consequences of severe rent burden in the city, I boiled this down to pretty simple. It's supply and demand. There's limited housing being constructed in Westland, little of it is rental stock. And so there's not a lot of rental stock available for people to rent, particularly at lower income levels. Consequence, 75% of renters are cost burdened, so that's again, paying more than 30% of your income, which is a rule of thumb that's been created, I think, by the federal Housing and Urban Development Group. And then again, this year, based on the most available data that we have, which is 2023, 34% of the renter population is severely cost burdened, so paying more than 50% of your income, which is, you know, really quite burdensome. Couple of the barriers that were identified, particularly through the housing production strategy. that make it so that it is hard for communities like Westland, not just Westland, but many communities to reduce rent burden. Limited buildable and zoned land plus high infrastructure costs equal high housing, pretty simple formula. So that's kind of the market piece, I would say. And then looking at the non-market piece, there's limited funding to pre-regulated affordable housing, region wide, but particularly here in Westland. So some possible solutions to try to end the presentation on a more upbeat note than all of the negative data that I provided you, unfortunately. Possible solutions are really going back to, I'll just flip back to it, which is the council, you know, provide direction to staff to work on adopting some of the policies and programs recommended in the housing production strategy. And, you know, so again, rezoning land to potentially create a greater supply of zoned land can help address some of those issues. You know, updating SDCs, which would help reduce the, which the council's already done, you know, already, but that helps reduce the overall costs and potentially brings down the house, the cost of housing. And then thinking about some of the other things, you know, using tax increment financing, adopting some of the low income, you know, which have long acronyms that I'm not gonna try to spell up, you know, different low income housing tax exemptions, which, you know, for a very limited amount of lost or foregone revenue to the city, create potential opportunities for affordable housing. And quite frankly, having worked with affordable housing developers in the past, affordable housing just isn't, is impossible without them, simply put. And so those are things that, as the council thinks about prioritizing this issue, that we will come back with further information on, but are definitely worthy of consideration.
I'm sorry, did I miss a word? Did you say affordable housing is simply impossible? Was there a word I missed in that sentence?
No, you got it. You knew that, yeah.
Okay.
With like regulated affordable housing, where, you know, where you'd have a stack of pieces. The affordable housing providers rely on the forgone, the tax exemption to make their operational costs work. Because otherwise, I mean, it basically just means that it has to come from somewhere else, right? Like the, in order to have, because, I mean, they operate, it's like, we just had a whole conversation at the last work session item about financing and how it works. And so affordable housing is similar to market rate housing from the actual, like, once the, once the, once the complex, let's call it a apartment complex is built, then they have to have, they have to basically pay back the loan. And in order to have the renters pay only thirty percent of their income or less, if you have someone that makes forty thousand dollars a year, the only way to make that pencil for a unit is to have some sort of like funding mechanism fill the gap. And that typically, I mean,
At tax exemption or subsidies, direct subsidies.
Yeah, you got it. Yeah. So that's a great question. Thank you. And then that concludes my presentation, and so I'm happy to answer any additional questions, facilitate discussion, whichever direction the council would like to go.
Thank you, Steve, for that great presentation. And you mentioned that there was, we got some grant funding and there might be need to have some conversations about which things we pursue, which we table. And is that something we should talk about in a work session next year at some point?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
So maybe an action item out of that is, at some point in the first couple of quarters of next year, we'll put that on a work session agenda and provide some direction on which housing production strategies to pursue with the grant funding. How much did we get?
So the direct consultant grant, for the first part, just covers the work of the consultant under the three actions. And then the other one, it was two hundred thousand dollars requested, and then the grant was a hundred and twenty five thousand.
Cool.
So it, I mean, it'll be something different, but it won't be markedly different.
Nice. Any other questions? Or comments on, Councilor Bonn, go ahead.
At the risk of upsetting the real estate lobby, I know that in Portland, there's a fee that, that new rentals need to pay to register their property. I don't know how much it actually does for them, but it does generate a little revenue for the city. I guess they had discovered they, they had lost fifteen million dollars or something from that fee specifically. I wonder if we could look at some sort of renters, the program that we could do something similar with, whether that's to help create more affordable housing or better ensure tenant rights. So another conversation, but I think there might be an opportunity there.
Thank you for that, councillor.
I have a question.
Councillor Baumgartner, please.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. So I was, when you were talking about tax exemptions, I was wondering if the projects in Lake Oswego on Boons Ferry, Upper Boons Ferry Road, is that something that those have, that has enabled those to, do you know, happen to know about those projects? I think one is a Habitat for Humanity.
Yeah, I would say I'm less sure about the Habitat for Humanity because they operate under a little bit of a different model. But I know for the other complex, yes.
A tax exemption?
Yeah.
Okay.
Fifty unit or so at Sunset and Boons Ferry, yes.
Yes. And the other question that occurred to me while you were talking just about inventory is how, just to use it as an example, the proposed multi-unit complex off of Tandler will impact the housing inventory for, for this? I know it's market rate rental, but kind of how, how will a project like that affect what we're looking at here?
Well, I mean, clearly it'll go quite a long way in satisfying the thousand unit demand over the next twenty years. So that would be a big chunk of that. I think that you also saw that, you know, a fair amount of the demand was actually at the higher end level. And so that included higher end rents. And so you could imagine that, you know, a new apartment complex even market rate satisfies the demand. And I think that there's, you know, different people have different perspectives on it. And so I can share, one perspective is that, like, creating more units in a place that, you know, people want to come here and want to live for a variety of different reasons, whether it's school districts, whether it's proximity to jobs, whatever reason that they might want to live in Westland. You know, if you provide opportunity for people to live at various price points, they're not necessarily like, someone who might be willing to live in an apartment doesn't have an apartment to live in that may occupy a single family house that maybe is only suitable for a family, for example. And so the more choice you have, the more that, like, rents would, rents or prices would align with actual, again, this is like economic theory, and some people disagree with it and say that's not true, that people will just continue building at the high end. And so, you know, there's different sides to that. I don't know that there's a definitive argument, in part just because in this country, and particularly in Oregon, there's not enough building really to test the theory, right? It's, it's all academic.
Thank you.
Thanks for that question, Council President. Councilor Bonn, you brought up an idea, and obviously during our future work session on housing production strategy, that's something you could bring up at that point, for sure. Councillor Groner, please, close us out.
Yeah, you mentioned Habitat for Humanity, and actually I've worked with them in North Carolina. What is, from this point of view of the city, is there a way we can encourage them to build some housing? Have we had any contacts or couldn't we have any contacts?
I have not. I've talked to some affordable housing providers. I think that the biggest issue is, is, is again, going back to that zoned available land piece, right? That there's just not currently a lot of land available that is zoned. And, you know, typically, any kind of affordable housing provider, again, like, and we can, I'm happy to come back at another time sometime next year and have a, you know, more comprehensive discussion about.
Appreciate that.
But, I mean, you know, the, kind of what I referred to is like a housing stack. And so like, if you see it, it looks like a layer cake, and each of the layers is like a different funding source. And so like a common funding source is somehow either, whether it's, again, through subsidy or whether it's through like some sort of grant, like typically the land being available, it's somehow reduced cost is part of that. And so, I mean, A, you have to have available land, and B, you have to have available land that can either be purchased at market cost with a subsidy to reduce the cost, or it needs to be acquired by like a government intermediary, like a city or a housing authority, who would then gift or, you know, grant for free the land to the provider. And so you see like Milwaukee, Pud River, communities like that, that have a construction excise tax as one of their, like, housing production solutions that, you know, they're, the point of that is that they're collecting funds in order to be able to provide a local contribution in money. So whether that's either assisting with land acquisition or acquiring land and donating it to generate affordable housing. So those are, those are all kind of tools that all relate to like, there's the capital piece, and then there's the O and M piece of actually like maintaining the affordable housing on an ongoing basis. And so each part needs some level of subsidy, a rather high one.
Thank you very much.
That's good. Thank you, councillor. And councillor Bright, final comment on rent burdened housing in Westland?
So this is certainly very long term, but some zoning changes for Vision Forty Three, as well as the waterfront, could make more space available. But again, as we know, Westland is pretty well built out. It would require redevelopment, and we don't have like big vacant spots that new stuff can, where we don't have many large vacant spots that things can be built. With the League of Oregon Cities, when they had their conference in Portland, we went to Gresham and got to, to view and tour two new multifamily developments that were built that one of them had just opened a few months ago and was full, like they had one vacant unit. And so I agree, or I have read, and it makes sense to me that building any kind of housing will help relieve some of the burden.
Anything else? We can move on? Well, this is going to be continued topic into next year and beyond, and we'll probably see it back here next year for another one of these presentations. So it's always good to chat about this issue and housing affordability in Westland, and glad we have some strategies to try to do whatever we can to help.
Thank you again for your time.
And next final item on the agenda is the well anticipated city manager report.
Well, I don't know. Ken's been waiting for it. He's a fan. We got some to do's from today's meeting, scheduling items in two thousand and twenty six, a number of different topics. So we'll work with the mayor to schedule those. And we already have some comms work underway on the operation center ideas that you raised earlier this afternoon. So staff are working on those as I, as I watch, which is great. Let's see. So next meeting is Tuesday, December ninth, a week from today in the evening. We have a couple of contracts on the consent agenda. There will be a couple of planning department items, an annexation on the ballot, on the agenda, which you haven't done in some time. And Darren will be bringing back that Metro Town Center, Center item. And then we'll have the full faith and credit obligation consideration for the operation center, and that'll be most likely your last meeting of the month. Right now, we are thinking of canceling that December sixteenth work session with all holiday events. And the mayor, I believe, out of town for that meeting is probably a good one. We don't have any items on the agenda, so we are looking at canceling that one. But we do have one more time sensitive, perhaps, matter to think about this year. That's continued conversation about Oppenlander at your most recent discussion of it, in the finance discussion. There was some idea of possibly a ballot measure in May to include that property and maybe some other projects. This was a semi, I would say, a semi-formed idea, not a, not a full council consensus or anything. But you'll remember, May ballot has to be done by mid February. And so if we are to be working on that over the holidays, we need to know as soon as possible. So I thought we might schedule a little discussion of that next week's meeting with the mayor's permission. We have a little bit more information on this now. The application has had a pre-app, so we have some layouts possible. We have some, some early level information, I would say, that allow a directional council conversation. So those will be the items for December ninth. Other things, someone already mentioned the tree lighting, six o'clock Friday, tree lighting, always highly anticipated. Speaking of winter, we had a meeting earlier today looking at inclement weather policies, reviewing our procedures for sanding, for closing hills, for public communications, for warming centers, all those things that we often need to do in the winter. We've made some tweaks and improvements that we'll look forward to telling you about in an upcoming meeting. We'll be doing lots of public communication about our winter policies. I, in last year's snowstorm, I filmed a city manager video for use this year. And I'm looking forward to going and finding that and watching it and seeing if I still like it. But it was pretty funny. I stood out in the snow and remember how hard it was snowing that, that snowstorm? That was, that's some, that's some good stuff there. Just basically explaining to people, stay home in emergency situations, try not to drive. We close hills, try not to go around the signs, move the signs, all of that kind of stuff. That we have four trucks to get a hundred and sixty miles of streets, so give us some grace. All of those kinds of things are the sorts of things we communicate about. I attended a meeting at Metro yesterday that kind of followed up on the Metro Mixer that we had a couple of weeks ago. They were presenting to the city managers of the region, that's an exciting meeting for you to go to sometime, information about what they're thinking about financially, financial measures in the future. We've heard them talk about possible additional future measures on housing and homelessness, possibly on transportation. A new one that I had not heard of before is there's some, some folks thinking about some sort of regional initiative on sports to increase us as a destination area for sports tournaments, finding facilities, improving facilities region wide. I know this is an item that has come up in council conversations, I'm looking at Council President Baumgartner. If there was some sort of regional source, it could help a lot with each city finding locations and building us up as a, as a sports entertainment region. We have heard many times as a region that we don't have adequate facilities and a lot of, we're missing out on a lot of, a lot of, a lot of good tournaments that could happen here if we had better facilities. So Metro is thinking about that and trying to figure out how does that relate to other kinds of conversations, actually. Their strategic consultant is someone you may know, Sarah Singer Wilson, facilitated a council work session, talking about priorities and using scorecards to evaluate priorities. So we are in good company. They are thinking about all those things. They're also starting work on their future vision. This would be the next twenty forty growth concept. Having, they're required by charter at Metro to have a fifty year vision for the region. And the one that ends in twenty forty now is not a fifty year vision by any means of the, of the word. So they are thinking about that, and they're going to be reaching out to communities and to city councils over the next year and thinking about what is your, what is our part of a vision for the region's future. So that should be, that should be exciting work. Last two things, two library calendar reminders. The Library Foundation is having a vintage book sale Friday and Saturday this week in the community room. Rare and unique items is what I was told. So I don't know if it's just like old Dan Brown novels or if it's more interesting than that, we'll see. Nothing wrong with an old Dan Brown. And this one, I really like, they are doing a speed puzzling competition Saturday. There's four person teams, so one of you would have to stay home, but they are allowing four person teams to sign up. You'll have a hundred and twenty minutes to complete a five hundred piece puzzle. This would be Saturday, the thirteenth, from noon to two, and they are taking team registrations.
I won't be there, so there could be four right here.
Still a council quorum. Just don't talk about city business, just talk about puzzling, if you do it. But it's just the kind of creative event that they do and kind of fun. So with that, I will leave you be until next Tuesday. Thank you for your hard work today. Very appreciated.
Councillor Groner, please.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I did read that this, in the city of London, they had a timed spreadsheet puzzle contest. So you had several puzzles, and people had a half an hour to see how many of those puzzles they could solve. Exciting, exciting sport.
There is another event happening this week. It is the social, it's a dance and social. It is the social, it's a dance and social at the Adult Community Center. It's actually at the same time as our holiday tree lighting. So if you don't want to go outside and be chilly, you could go to the social. It is a event particularly to, with, for the consideration of enjoyment of individuals, teen, young adults with physical or cognitive disabilities and their friends and family. So, but it's a very fun event organized by the wonderful Nicole Button, who works at the facility there, the Adult Community Center. Shout out to her and all of her good work.
Thanks for bringing that up, Mary. Anything else for the good of the order? Seen, and then anything else? Okay, well then, we are adjourned until next Tuesday.
Quick one. I'm in Healthcare for All Oregon Organization.
Yeah.
And wondering, I've got a proposal-